I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 21st. It is the week of Thanksgiving and there's lots to be thankful and grateful for. And we're grateful that you're here tonight. So this is Duluth Public Schools. This is our monthly school board meeting. And I will turn to Clerk Zdowski and she'll take role call.
Member Eders, here. Member Kirby, here. Member Laffler Kemp, here. Member Lowwell, here. Member Oswald, here. I am here, member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich.
Present.
HR Director Severance.
Present.
Board Secretary Piquet.
Here.
And Denfeld Student Representative Lauren Mollard.
Here.
And East Representative Elsa Please.
Again, thank you all for coming. Thanks for board and student reps. It's an important night tonight with a lot of business. So we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members, you've had a copy of our agenda for a week or few days. And as you look, it's a full agenda, but I'm looking for a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Moved by Eders, seconded by Laffler Kemp. Are there any discussions on the agenda tonight? Any additions? Anything that needs to be not addressed? Hearing none. All those in favor will go by roll call vote for approval of the agenda.
Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Laffler Kemp.
Yes.
Member Lowwell.
Yes.
Member Oswald.
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Sandholm.
Yes.
And member Durketer.
The agenda is approved. Moving on to item number five. It is the school and community recognition. And I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, board, and welcome everyone. I would like all of those who will be recognized to please join me. Okay, here. Oh. Come on. Just going to say, what I'll do is, because I'm not sure who's here, I'll have, I'll just read for you anything then. Because I'm not sure it's all here. But you're here.
Yeah.
Alright, so members of the board and the community, tonight I would like to recognize nineteen staff members for receiving a Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund grant. The Endowment Fund for Duluth Public Schools represents a community-based effort to provide supplemental funding to enrich the academic, cultural, athletic, and overall experiences for staff and students, and to encourage and reward creativity and innovation in the pursuit of academic excellence. The Duluth Public Schools Fund was established in 1984 by the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation to gain greater visibility to support the Duluth Public Schools by supporting innovative and creative educational projects. Guided by an independent nineteen, fifteen-member volunteer advisory board comprised of business and civic leaders, the Duluth Public Schools Fund annually reviews proposals and recommends grant awards ranging from $500 to $2,000 for projects. Since its beginning, the Duluth Public Schools Fund has awarded grants to over three hundred teachers, principals, and specialists, which have improved learning experiences for students. To date, the fund has enriched the public school classrooms with over a half a million dollars in grants. The fund is managed and invested internally through the foundation. Assets have grown to nearly one half million dollars through generous donations and grants from business, individuals, and foundations in the area. This year, the grants will support things like setting, tree, sensory, field guides for fifth graders, hands-on learning centers, heart monitors for students in gym classes, and much, much more. I want to congratulate the nineteen individuals who received grants this year, and we have three of them here. And not two.
We'll see one.
We're going to go on up and share a little bit about, a little bit about the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Sorensen. And my partner that was with me that helped write the grant is Michelle Riley. And we are at Duluth East High School. Just wanted to show our sincere appreciation to the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund Grant Award because these awards are integral for helping students and doing some extra things for them that we wouldn't necessarily be able to do. So with our appreciation for that, we'd like to, we'd like to share that tonight. Our, our grant that we vote was basically related to obtaining additional supplies. We're both science teachers and things were out, right? And they get used and, and it's not always to replace with the population of students that we have. So just keep it short and sweet and thanks for the opportunity and it was our pleasure to write it.
And thanks for coming tonight and sharing with us. And we're delighted at the over half a million in grants that have benefited teachers in our district. Our next item on our agenda is our public comment. And before we go to that, we do our tools of civility. So I call on member Kirby and on member Sandholm to review those tools of civility.
Thank you. Paula, I will read the mission, vision, and our core values initially. Our mission is that every student, every day will be empowered with learning opportunities for growth, creativity, and curiosity, and preparation for their future in the global community. Our vision, the Duluth Public Schools provides an academically engaging, safe, and inclusive environment with high expectations and responsible use of resources. And our core values include learning, excellence, equity, collaboration, and belonging. Learning means developing a love of learning throughout, through lifelong inquiry. Excellence means having high standards for all through accountability, integrity, and authenticity. Equity means creating conditions of justice, fairness, and inclusion, so all students have access to the opportunities to learn and develop to their fullest potential. Collaboration means working in partnership with staff, families, students, and the community. And belonging means providing a welcoming and accessible environment where everyone feels safe, seen, and heard. Eleven tools of civility. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest, and care for others, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comment. And how we do that is member Zdowski will also read just some guidelines that are also posted on our, our website under students, school board. And so hopefully these guidelines are something you've looked at, but she'll go over them briefly.
Sure. Here's some good information to know when you come to speak at a board meeting. Persons wishing to address the board will sign up before the board meeting, listing their name and the manner on which they will speak. And that was kind of as you walked in on the right back there. If you have any handout for the board, please give them to the school board secretary, Patty. Persons wishing to address the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. And then persons addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, use the use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. And persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow someone to speak more than three minutes. And I will start the stoplight timer at the start of each person's time. So green means go, yellow means start to wrap up, and red means stop. And that's right here. And to check it, it is lucky. And then when the red light comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to end. Persons addressing the board will combine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or other matters relevant to administrative concern. And in the interest of respect for every public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time. Thank you.
With that, I call up the first speaker and then I will also announce the, the next speaker. I kind of call it on deck. So our first speaker is Abby Norton. And on deck, deck is Deborah Sala.
Hello. I am Abby Grobeck Norton. I am the proud MTS coordinator at Congdon. I'm also the proud mother of a seventh grader and a third grader, two beautiful girls in the 709 district. I stand here today with a shaky voice, not because I'm nervous about speaking in front of people. I'm a teacher by trade. I am nervous for the safety of the students and staff at Congdon Elementary. After one of the unfortunate many math school shootings, our crisis team at Congdon met and decided to keep our front doors locked. Our school is very unique for the fact that our first set of doors opens up to a large lobby. This lobby is also directly connected to our gymnasium. And it's also the space where our kindergarten students hold smart lessons, which is where entire classrooms go to work on gross motor skills. Having the doors locked is to directly protect those kindergarten students and the students in the gym. We were told there were numerous complaints from parents wanting access to our building. And we welcome parents coming into our school to volunteer. Today alone, we had a whole slew of wonderful parents helping our third graders disguise turkeys so they don't get eaten for Thanksgiving. We had kindergarten parents come in to accompany classes to our nature world. And we had other parents coming in to volunteer in the lunchroom. But because of these parents complaining, our crisis team was told we need to lock the We suggested having an intercom installed down by the front doors. We were shut down. We were asked to have a seat at the table to discuss possible solutions. And we were shut down. The safety of our staff and students is our number one priority. Keeping our front doors locked is in the best interest for Congdon. Keeping the doors locked gives an extra ten seconds to save a life. What's a bigger deal? A parent who has to stand under the awning to shield themselves from an occasional rain shower before being buzzed into our school? Or a kindergarten teacher who has to use her body as a shield to protect her students from bullets? It's a real, a real thought all teachers think about. I ask you to allow the Congdon Crisis Team to show you our unique school before making decisions that affectly, that directly affect the safety of our students, our staff, and my daughter.
And next speaker is Deborah Sala. And next is Heidi Claussen.
Hello. My name is Deborah Sala. I'm a pediatrician at Sedgwick Hospital and a parent of a Congdon student. To the members of the ISD 709 Board, School Board and Superintendent Magus, it has been brought to the attention of the parents of Congdon Park Elementary School just this afternoon that a decision has already been made without time for a forum for parents nor staff to comment on and raise our concern in regards to unlocking the doors at Congdon Park Elementary School during school hours. As parents of multiple children current and past at Congdon, we strongly disagree with both this decision and the process by which it was decided. As you know, we live in an era of mass shootings in schools in addition to many other crimes against children. Congdon Elementary School has no other tangible security measures in place at its entrances other than locking the doors and having visitors buzzed in. Both our students and our teachers face a higher level of danger if anyone can access the school at any given time. The minor inconvenience of making a call for access seems trivial as compared to the safety of our children. We, the undersigned parents and grandparents, strongly oppose the lock, unlocking of the doors at Congdon Park Elementary School. We would appreciate that these decisions be made in collaboration and communication with parents. We worry daily about our children. There have already been more than seventy-one mass shootings at schools as of November ninth this year, and forty-seven were key to twelve. On further note, our kindergarteners are the ones that are on the ground floor. Excuse me. They are the first to be impacted by anyone who has entrance to the school and access this lobby area just inside these doors for activities as well. I encourage you to think about that as you consider these changes, which could have impacts on our children. Below is a truncated list of parents who would like to be recognized and participating in this statement. I know I don't have time, but there are already eighty-four people that are listed on this of the four hundred and fifty students that attend Congdon, and there are more in the works now. And I strongly ask you to consider our opinion in this matter. Thank you.
Heidi Claussen. And next after that is Stephanie Haskin. Heidi Claussen, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Heidi Claussen, and I am the administrative assistant at Congdon Park School at a previous parent. In the wake of the countless school shootings in our country, and most notably the shooting in Uvalde, Texas in May of 2022, a decision was made at Congdon to lock the exterior doors into our building. This decision was not made lightly, as this would create a small inconvenience to enter the building. Before May of twenty-two, people were able to enter a building, walk up to the office, ring the doorbell, and then have the door unlocked so they could come further into the school. One of the design flaws during our remodel is that the doorbell was installed right at the office door rather than outside the main doors. Due to the location of the doorbell with the main doors locked, parents are required to call the office to be buzzed into the building. Of course, there was a learning curve, but everyone has made the adjustment and we all feel safer. The layout of the entrance into Congdon is very different from other elementary schools as Mrs. Norton has described, and I won't go into a lot of that, other than it is used by kindergartners. It is used by small groups. And if those doors are open, people are in there, and it's happening right away. Safety has to be the main concern over convenience. We have heard that a few parents complained about having to call in, and we have suggested having a buzzer added outside at the main doors. Because of the handful of complaints, we have been directed to unlock the doors. I wonder why Congdon staff and other parents were not asked for their thoughts and ideas on this matter before a directive was given. Their decisions are not made in a vacuum. Is our administration not strong enough to put the safety of our children and staff above a few complaints? We are asking for the doors to remain locked. My office is surrounded by single pane glass. During the upgrades, we were told we would get reinforced glass, but that never happened. I am the first line of defense to protect our children. If the doors are unlocked, anyone with ill intent can just walk in the building and be up the stairs to the office in mere seconds, thus potentially denying me time and opportunity to hit the lockdown button. Yes, this all sounds doomsday, but there is no way to know when and where the next shooting will occur. Again, a few complaints versus school safety, it shouldn't even be a question. My last thought, in the spirit of warm and welcoming, why is the Duluth Service Center locked up tight? Is your safety more important than our students and staff?
Stephanie Haskin. And then on deck is Megan Spurle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie Haskin. I have two kids at Congdon, a fourth grader and a second grader, and then hopefully next year a kindergartner as well. So I am a parent of Congdon Park kids, and I'm also a member of the PTA. I'm in and out of the school, frequently doing various volunteer activities. And I'm here today to talk about school safety as well. It does seem that the district got some idea that parents were not pleased about the changes to the locking of the external door. And an email was sent out tonight trying to allay concerns, I think, about this change. But the email stated that this change was made to help make families feel more welcome, especially as the weather gets colder, to provide a safe, supportive, and welcoming school. Number one, look, we're Duluthians. We dress for the weather. We can handle it. Number two, as our administrator was just up here speaking to you, I have been buzzed into the school many times. Our admin is on top of it. I never have to wait long. She is incredibly welcoming. I can't imagine feeling more welcome in the school, and it doesn't matter to me if I have to wait a little bit outside. And as far as the supportive piece goes, I don't know how this change to the security of our school could be considered supportive without making sure that the, the teachers that work in the school are boots-on-the-ground people, as well as the parents of the students who are in the school are on board with this change. And look, I wasn't able to bring my kids into a world where we don't have to worry about violence in schools. That was, you know, out of my hands. I do think, though, that if we have to subject our elementary school students to Alice training, that it's up to their grownups to lock the door behind them. I think we owe them that. Thank you.
Next is Megan. And on deck is Dani Simelenich.
Good evening. My name is Megan Spurle, and I'm a parent of three children in the Duluth Public Schools, one at Ordene and two at Congdon. I'm also a staff member at Congdon. I work as a school counselor there. And additionally, I'm one of the co-presidents of our Congdon Park PTA. I'm speaking tonight with a plea to reconsider the decision to unlock the front doors of Congdon Park Elementary. Our building is set up differently than other buildings in the district. I know that Mrs. Norton shared that with you as well. Upon entering the front doors, we have that large lobby space that is frequently used. It's used by classrooms in that space. Students that need a break use this space. I take students in there a lot if they need a walk or a break from the classroom. And we, our gym can be accessed from that same entry point. As a school with lots of students, this space is very valuable to us. And allowing uncontrolled access to this space is not safe for our staff and is not safe for our students. We strive every day to be a safe and welcoming school. As a parent, I feel safer if there's an extra step for folks to get into our building. As a staff member, I feel safer if there's an extra step for folks to get into our building. As a parent, I can tell you that my children feel welcome in our building, even with the front doors locked. As a staff member, I can tell you that we work very hard to be welcoming. And if having our doors locked makes people feel unwelcome, we're open to some conversations about ways that we can, we can work around that or, or do something a little bit differently. But we feel safest with the doors locked. So I'm, I'm asking that you please revisit this decision. A bigger conversation is needed here, and we want to be a part of it. And our next PTA meeting is Monday night. I'm sure this will be a topic of conversation for our PTA. We'd welcome any of you to join us if you'd be willing to share a little bit more.
Hi, school board members, Superintendent Magus, and Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Thank you for listening and serving. My name is Dani Simelenich. I am a seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher at Ordene East Middle School. And this is my fourth year teaching in the school district. I'm here today to share stories from our school. I do not speak for all teachers at my site, but I want to highlight only a fraction of what goes on at our school. I'll be speaking on four topics: PBIS, school counselors and social workers, class sizes, and special education caseloads. Positive behavioral interventions and supports, also known as PBIS, is in its second, second year of implementation at Ordene East. It has been an excellent addition to our school. Talking to teachers and students, you can feel a shift in excitement to be in the building. I often see students helping each other in the hallway or classroom without teacher prompting. Not to say PBIS should take all the credit for our student success, but it has made a positive impact. This is also the second year where we have had three full-time school counselors, one for each grade level. Students have a counselor which will travel with them throughout their middle school career to support them in their academics and mental health. Though this is a great improvement from years past, the recommended counselor-to-student ratio is one to two hundred and fifty students. Each of our grade levels are past that recommended number by over one hundred students per grade level. And also to add here that we've only had one school social worker for many years, and we still are trying to advocate for more. Students learn better when class sizes are smaller. The class sizes at Ordene are ranging from thirty to thirty-six on the larger side. My biggest class size is thirty-three, and the smallest is twenty-eight. Since I teach social studies, these are classes that tend to be on the smaller side. My colleagues who teach math, English, science, choir, physical education, their class sizes are ranging from a low of thirty-two to thirty-six for each class period. Some teachers' total load of students is averaging well over a hundred fifty, sometimes over a hundred sixty. Teachers spend time outside of their contract to plan, grade, send emails, and more. When the class sizes increase, it is nearly impossible to accomplish everything during the forty-hour work week. If we wish to focus on the district goal of increasing reading proficiency, we should look to reducing class sizes. We have amazing students who make the class sizes manageable most days, but it's also hard to get to know and service all students when our class sizes are larger. Finally, our special education team has excellent teachers and paraprofessionals who are working hard to meet the needs of all our students. Currently, the caseloads for these teachers are higher than the recommended load. Recently, teachers indicated that they spent ten hours of their time outside of school to update the quarterly progress reports for their students. Caseloads for some special education teachers is exceeding thirty-five to forty. We need more teachers.
Up next is Julie Tykrow. And on deck is Rachel Jackson.
All right. Hello, everyone. I am Julie Tykrow. I teach English seven at Ordene East Middle School. And I want to talk to you tonight about how my students and I use technology in the classroom. So I'm going to run through a typical day in the English seven, the world of English seven. So I get there around seven thirty. I check my email, respond to any questions from my students or their grownups. There's always something to respond to. I also check my calendar to see what kind of meetings I have on deck for the day. And definitely good to have technology to keep track of bags, there's lots of meetings. Then finally, the kids come, and I start my first hour. Each day, I come in and I present my agenda on a Google slide on my Smartboard, which is very old. I think it's a classic. I think it's original. But I use it every day to show my students what materials they need in class and what our plan is for the day, what they should plan on learning for the day. And then I just use those Google slides to guide me through my lesson, kind of in place of notes. So lately, we've been learning both themes. So I present the information about themes to them, and then we, we talk about how we can find it, and we do some practice together on the Smartboard. And then we would launch it maybe a lesson using IXL, which is a program that allows students to practice their reading skills and math skills. And this is a subscription that we pay for here. And during this time, my students need working Chromebooks in order to have all this go smoothly, and also a working computer network. That's necessary also. Later in the hour, we might do some creative writing. Prompts will be presented on the Smartboard, and then they write on their Chromebooks, and they submit that assignment through Canvas, which is the LMS, the learning management system that we use to, to, to deliver our lessons and do our grades. This too, of course, requires a working Chromebook and a working computer network. One other thing about my daily slides is I also embed them into Canvas so students, when they're at home, they can see what we have done in class. Let's see. As I type this, I'm watching, and I, I'm waiting for an IEP meeting to start on a Google Meet, and I'm correcting video book talks that my students have done that I will show using the Smartboard. And the reason I bring all this up is because the technology part of the referendum And the reason I bring all this up is because the technology part of the referendum failed narrowly, and technologies such as hardware, software, networks, subscription services, they're all an integral part of the student and teacher day, and I am asking you to please continue to fund the technology that we need to prepare our students for the future. Thank you.
Rachel Jackson, and on deck is Rochelle Lyons-Lavon. Always a guessing game.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Ray Jackson, and I am a very proud principal at Myers-Wilkins Elementary. As most of you should know, this is now my second year at Myers. For myself, as I promised our staff, last year I watched, listened, learned, and built relationships with our community. It felt so good to be back this fall, and for the most part, to know what's going on and not walking around like a deer in headlights. All jokes aside, I'm here today to advocate on behalf of our students, staff, and families. I will also say that in my 26th, this is my 26th year in the district, and this is the first time I've ever felt compelled enough to speak at a board meeting. September is the month of welcoming. Welcoming everyone back, welcoming new students and families, welcoming new staff. October is the month of the grace period is over, and everyone is working hard to get students and staff supports in place and running smoothly. As we move into November, the challenges we face grow and grow. We have a fantastic staff who are constantly working together to problem-solve for the greater good. Unfortunately, often, it's not enough. Our staff is amazing, utterly amazing, but they are tired. Yesterday, at our mindset meeting, it was apparent that we needed to come together and talk about needs. One of the activities that we did was have three questions for each staff member to answer. What are the highlights or positive parts of your day at school? What are the biggest challenges of your day? And what would make coming to work better for you? The best part of those three questions was reading, obviously, the highlights, but out of those highlights of 90, two responses, 81 of them were about the kids and about the smiles and the joy, the sheer joy that our staff see in them and how they're learning and growing, and just excited to be there and excited to be something, part of something that is really amazing. The biggest challenges, on the flip side of that, are the students. And while I'm not going to go into details, we do have a lot of support, but for the number of students that we have that need it, it is not enough. As we go back to trying to figure out and work together, which, again, our staff is amazing, and we will continue, this is not the appropriate forum to discuss our needs in detail. I'm begging you to come to Myers-Wilkins, not for a walkthrough or an office chat. Please, come for the day, half-day, even an hour. We need you to see our needs because it is too difficult to understand them unless you are with us. Thank you.
Next is Rochelle, and on deck is Zee.
Thank you for having me. I'm Rochelle Lomond. I'm a special education teacher at Myers-Wilkins, and I would echo so much of what Ray has shared with you. It's my second year at Myers, and I love this school so much. I wanted to post it notes that the highlight is just seeing the kids. I've worked in education for about 20 years, the first 10 years in higher ed, and transitioned into special ed over the last couple of years. But this population is so special. I've never been in a school where I have so many hugs every day and so many needs, and like everybody, and, yeah, I know you're hearing it from all of us, but our kids need more. Come visit our school, watch what they're doing. I guarantee you'll get a hug along the way. Thank you.
On is Zee, and then after Zee is Michelle Brownfield.
Hello. My name is Zee Lenkey. Zee Indigenousas, Gawaini Dududan, Misin, Tijopin in Dunjiba, I know I, Oma, Mesabikam, and Nungam. My name is Zee. I don't have a clan. I'm from Madison, Wisconsin, and I now live in Duluth, where I have a kindergartner and a third grader in Mesabikam, a language immersion school at Lowell. Before I say what I came here to say, I just want to say that as a parent, I've also just heard things about how understaffed, especially our special education programs are, and hearing what the parents and the staff at Congdon have said is a little horrifying, and I'd just like to give my support to the people who've come before me, too. I'm actually here with first-world problems. I'm here about Keyzone. My older child is now a third grader. He was a COVID kindergartner and did remote learning. We cobbled things together and made it work, and then he's had Keyzone for his after-school care for first and second grade. This year, my spouse, through no fault of his own, I'm sure he'll tell you that it was his fault, but he was two hours late signing up. And so our children, both of them, are now on the waiting list for Keyzone at Lowell. They are not first on the waiting list after, literally, two hours after signing up. This means that since my spouse is a professor at La Colorada Community College, and I'm a registered nurse working from home because I do phone triage, I get four, three hours a day to supervise my kids and work at the same time. It's great! And by great, I mean I'm yelling at my kids to go watch more YouTube, which I'm sure is, as most of you are aware, is not the American Pediatrics Association recommended style of parenting. Keyzone needs staff, it needs space, it needs transparency in how these decisions are made. We propose we can bus my kids to Piedmont. They can bus to Piedmont anyway. There's another parent there who can pick them up and walk them over to Keyzone at Piedmont if Piedmont has space. Absolutely not. We can't do that. Well, okay. Fine. I understand that it's not a door between my kids and a bullet, but it's important to me. You guys are my elected officials. I'm just here to remind you, hey, matters. Please can we get a Keyzone staff? Thank you.
Michelle Brownfield, on deck is Cassandra Hill.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Michelle Brownfield. I'm a licensed psychologist here in the state of Minnesota. I'm also a mother of two that attend Congdon Elementary School. Approximately two hours ago, I received a text message from a fellow mother who was concerned about the safety measures that were being taken at Congdon Elementary. If any of you are familiar, Congdon Elementary doesn't have any safety measures that they take. The only thing that they have are glass doors that they lock in the front and in the back. But these are going away, and now open access will take place. So I stand here, had no idea I would be doing this tonight, last-minute babysitter and evening clothes. So I apologize for my disheveled look, but I am here because I am super concerned because there is no vestibule, there is no welcoming area for parents. It is the entrance to the school. And as Heidi often mentioned, her entire front office area is glass. The gymnasium door, one of two, I imagine, will have to remain completely locked, and the rest of the doorway entry into the rest of the school is glass. And if we learned anything from shooters in this country is that AR-15s shoot through glass very, very easily. All of the doors, including the classroom doors, including the back door to the entrance of the school, have glass, which means that all of the kindergarten-aged kids on the first floor are open access as soon as anybody determined enough to get in to hurt somebody gets in and decides to hurt somebody. My children are in first and third grade, and they're terrified after learning this. They already know better that they're not safe somehow. Every day, I put them on a bus, and I wave goodbye to them, and they are unarmed, and they do not wear armor, and they go to a classroom that is as open as this room and sit to learn. There are an exceptional amount of school shootings, and my kids are told through Alice to hide under their desk. If someone came in here, would you hide under your desk and feel safe? I'm asking. Would you feel safe hiding under there if somebody came in with an AR-14, AR-15? Probably not. Please, at least, stop upgrading the playgrounds and start upgrading our safety for our children. They are a target all over this country.
First of all, I'd like to say this is a little intimidating, and I don't know why you're about to start facing the people that are coming to this meeting, but that's another discussion. Anyways, I have PTSD, so I'm not comfortable doing any of this, but I'm doing this because it's necessary. I would like to say my main concern is people making decisions about my child's school and safety without my consent. Like, where is the, I have no right about the red code, which is where you guys can make decisions without letting parents and public vote on decisions. I'm assuming it's because of funding. Also, funding has to do with pushing kids through the school system, even if they're not learning things, to get the funding that you need, and I understand these things. And that is not your fault. That is the fault of the system. But when it comes to the safety of my child, I'm going to be here, and I'm going to speak up. I've had a hard life. My daughter literally got kidnapped by her father at school. Now, the reason was is he was smart enough to wait until the end of the day when they were going out to the bus. She has suffered from PTSD, and is struggling every day. I also have PTSD from having my child on for a long time, and I had no idea where to find her. I'm asking that you at least give the consideration to let us know when you feel like you can make the decision for my child when you haven't asked how we feel about it. I don't care what parent complained, who funds the school, or whatever, because it always comes down to money, and I understand the position that you people are putting. But I'm telling you one thing, if you want our kids to do well in school, you want the problems with their behavior and things like that to stop, get down to the root cause. Kids do not feel safe at school. They worry about getting shot every day. And as kids without PTSD, then you want to throw my child on a plan to push her through so she doesn't actually have to learn. I don't agree with that. I wouldn't put her on the plan. My expectations for her and for teachers and for you as the school board are higher than that, and I think that you guys know, regardless of what reasons you have, that the concerns are real, and that if you really care about kids, you'll do what's right and you'll at least give the parents notice of things like this. I never, ever cared about these things before, and I always trusted the school board and teachers. And unfortunately, I don't anymore. I'm asking that you change that opinion.
Again, thank you for your public comment tonight and the information and the issues Next, we go to, go to number seven. I'll just wait for just a minute. Under number seven, board members, we did have a reading of communications, one we received on November 13th from Roger Owen. It's on Board Book, and you can read his concerns and his questions. That brings us to number eight, the report of the superintendent. And under the report of the superintendent is A, reports from our student reps, B, our superintendent report, and C, the schedule of meetings coming up. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Magus.
Yes. Thank you. And I'll begin my report in just a moment, but we have our student representatives, Representative Priest and Muller from Denville and East, respectively. And I can't remember which one of you is up to go first this time, but you can draw straws or foot coin or just decide.
I'll go first. So here is my report for the event. So I do have a going-out-in-school map. I report some events that happened in this one day. We played a turkey bingo. We had a Google Meet where everyone could play bingo in their classrooms, and the numbers were drawn, drawn over Google Meet, and we won some prizes. But the fun part was we had to gobble through the hallways. And we went to go get your prize. It was funny. In two minutes. We had our harvest game, and it was a disco game, so that was pretty fun. We had a talent show last week, as well as a fall autumn mural. We have our blood drive tomorrow, run by Abio and Alms. Many students, you have to be 16-year-old, but many students sign up to give blood, and that's a good way for the school to come together. And then December, our winter week is coming up, which is a fun sphere waiting for our winter break. Some sports and activities are that basketball, hockey, and cross-country skiing have all started up. The cross-country skiing team is actually taking a trip to Yellowstone right now. There's no snow for them skiing, but still a fun trip. And the band is taking a trip to Florida this same week. There is also a holiday music concert from All the Musics on December 16th. And then some updates are, Sword of Strength is a group that looks to provide a safer space that will sustain wellness for all students, and they had their two-day training for the club recently so that they're up and running. I'm working with student government to elect next year's student representative from junior class. That's exciting. Freshmen, behavior circles took place. That's a new theme this year. Mr. Geisert, our climate coordinator, ran them, and he also had two student government members in every conversation, and he just talked about, like, good behavior versus bad behavior, how to work well with others in classes, a few things about the A-We for the Day policy, just a lot of things like that, just to get the freshmen all on the same page and everyone all on the same page and try to foster a good culture. And around class behavior. And about A-We for the Day policy, I asked, I have been asking for general opinion, and most students express concerns regarding, like, not having access to some schools while still having family responsibilities, jobs, sports clubs, and other responsibilities. It can cause miscommunications or issues or maybe just stress for a student. On the other hand, other people have reported that they feel more focused, involved in key, so I guess, like, anything is a learning curve, and some people have more trouble with it than others. Some teachers have been providing links to articles to A-We for the Day research on how social media or phone use impacts your brain, how it impacts your learning, how having technology in your room with you can impact your learning. And I think that's a great way to get everyone on the same page instead of maybe punishing people for using their phones, which... people for using their phones, which they've gotten in the habit of. I think that's a great way to get everyone on the same page. Just some random things is, a group of students let me know they would like to have the always stop at the intersection outside the front piece as opposed to the two-way stop there is now. Students feel this would create a safer crossing before and after school. And then the point of view group meets once a month, used to talk about how things are running. And today we talked about reducing the number of school dances this year to make them more special. Because right now, we almost have one a month, which is fun, but it's kind of a lot. And we consider red and gray dance, but they know having a senior dance aboard the Vista Fleet. And then administration is also cracking down on towing cars parked in the student parking lot without passes. Because this morning, no one's been towed yet, but students and staff have been waiting through the window at the parking lot waiting for justice to be served.
Student Representative Priest, I'd like to say that that might be one of the most amusing statements I've heard from a student report. Thank you.
So far, the month of November has been great at Denfeld. On November 4th, we had our annual Fall Ball in our gym. And this year, it was Hollywood. And from what I've heard, it was a hit. On November 6th, Denfeld had its annual scholarship night for the senior class and their families. This night was filled with information about scholarships that are open for our seniors to apply for. We also have representatives from local scholarships come and talk about our scholarships. And then it was open in comments for any seniors to ask any questions. We also had this week their first scholarship wins for seniors to attend to get help filling out the scholarship applications and get one-on-one help if needed. We also had our annual Veterans Day concert on November 13th in our historic auditorium. It was a great night full of music with pieces performed by the choirs, the jazz band, and the advanced orchestra. This week, we saw the return of Denfeld's Student Run newspaper. Apparently, issues are only being published quarterly, but students within the class are hopeful that as the year goes on, it'll be published on a monthly basis instead. During the month of November, we also saw the run of our first show of the year. Ripcord was a show put on by the Denfeld Theater Program. And what made the show unique was the presence of two actresses from the community playing the weeds. From what I've heard from everyone I've talked in the theater community, it was an honor to get to work with the actresses and they learned so much. Today, Denfeld's Quarter One Soaring Hunters got to go on a field trip. Those of us who earned it were rewarded with a trip to the Hermitown Lakes 10 Theater to see the Hunger Games, the Ballad of Songbirds and Snakes. While at the theater, students were treated to popcorn and soda while we enjoyed our film. And tomorrow, we will be hosting our Fall Blood Drive, which is put on as a collaboration between Denfeld Key Club and the Duluth branch of the American Red Cross. We are hoping to meet or possibly even beat our numbers from last year.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the student reports very much. And as we just take a look at our mission, vision, and values that we came up with, I just, it's important to point out the different values we have. Sometimes we focus on learning, excellence, equity, collaboration, belonging. I know tonight we heard a lot about belonging, providing a welcoming and accessible environment where everybody feels safe and heard. And I think that is very important. And I think that we heard some voices tonight about safety and about sense of belonging and concerns there. We certainly take that into account. We do have, when we think about safety, we want to make sure sometimes that we have uniform practices too. And our uniform practices at this point are to have the best of schools online so that students can buzz themselves in or staff and, sorry, staff and parents as they come through can go through that proper channel. I realize the Comden entrance is a little bit different, but that is something that we have worked to address, but we'll certainly take into account what was shared with us tonight and have additional conversation. And it is, all schools have, all schools have glass, all schools have glass doors, all school has, you can see glass there. Somebody can shoot through that door in an instant whether it's locked or not. I'm not trying to make light of those comments. I think that it's very important that we consider that. But when we consider also making sure that it's welcoming and accessible, that's important too. So, it's a, it's a hard balance. And, you know, we do our best and we try our best. And, you know, we think about the referendum here, that we have the results of the referendum. It was question number one, the votes were totaled and we had a large majority voting in favor of question one. And then it was really close with question number two. Question number two lost by fewer than 300 votes. And question number one, as you remember, it allowed us to refinance our debt. So, that freed up $2.6 million per year out of the general fund to support academic interventionists. By the way, reading interventionists, math interventionists, counselor positions, new class options with the new high school schedule, thinking about those mental health supports that we have there. But again, as you hear, there probably will never feel like enough. We have very significant needs. And we do our best to meet those needs. We've worked hard for referendum and I think that helps at least keep the positions that we have. So, I think that that's a positive. Question number two, it would have authorized Capital Projects Levy to provide $5.3 million annually for devices. Think about learning technology, cybersecurity improvements, and technology staff. But we'll have to regroup. We're talking with Bart and others related to those technology needs and also working really closely with Simone on our finances. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. But we're deeply grateful for our community for recognizing and supporting the needs of our students. We really want to say thanks. It's a time of gratitude. And I'm very, very grateful for you as board members. I'm grateful for our staff and the hard work they put in as well as our community and parents. And especially grateful for the community that supported question one. Refinancing that debt really allows us to free up the money for mental health and academic supports, as I've said. However, that rejection of the technology levy is likely to limit how quickly we as a district can implement what we hope to do with technology. So, it's really time for us to reflect on this and go a little deeper. So, next week, we are meeting with the strategy team that we've worked with to, with the group that we worked with to really consider where are we and where do we go next? Simone is working feverishly. She's probably wiping her brow as I speak. Because we are really putting in those new variables into our financial software systems. We've talked about the forecasting software systems that we have. And just really appreciate that work that's being done there. And I think that will give us a better forecast on where we're going. But I also think it's important for us to think about where do we go next? And I think at some point, if we are gonna take care of those technology needs, there very well may need to be another ask of our community. That ask may look different, it may be at a different time, but I think we need to really assess those, those needs are still there. Looking at many other districts, there were technology referenda that did not pass. There were districts that have gone up for seven times in a row and still have had that not pass. We also look at Rochester, who had a similar referendum to ours for technology that didn't pass and they're going back out for theirs for this year. So, I'm not saying that that's what we should do. Of course, it would be a board decision if we came upon that. But I think it's important for us to really deeply assess where we're at and then come back to the board and have that conversation. I think it's also important to note that we, if we were going forward with something, we would want to make sure that we had enough time to do well, because I think that we were a little bit constrained with time. But it's important for us to consider that as we move forward. As far as negotiations go, we are bringing forward our principal contract tonight for board approval. It includes a three-year, year one increase and a three-year, year two increase. Or three percent, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm a little off today. So, we're bringing forward this and basically three percent for year one, three percent to year two. And then for an additional three percent in year one, we're gonna be adding an extra week of contracted time. So, the principals are all adding an extra week to their contract, working an additional five days. And then our elementary principal, or elementary assistant principal, we have one position in the district. Their calendar was quite, quite a bit shorter than others, so they're actually adding 10 days rather than five to that. So, that's where that is. We're working with the Duluth Federation of Teachers and we actually meet tomorrow with a small group, some of the continued preliminary planning, and then also meet with a large negotiation team next Thursday. And I know sometimes people might be wondering, because we maybe be further along at this point, but this was something that we all agreed on, that we wanted to make sure that we got to the point of getting past the referendum and kind of seeing where things were at financially before we could really move forward very quickly. And then also, we have our integration specialist negotiations are underway right now too. And so, I would be looking to the board to maybe have a closed session in the near future, next week or the week after perhaps, to consider, maybe prior to the, prior or after the committee of the whole, to consider, to consider the negotiation needs. And just as far as additional updates, as I mentioned, we're working on a variety of things throughout the district, working on making sure that we're able to carry through with that strategic plan. We had a great session at AMSD with board members there. I think that was two weeks ago already, but it seems like, seems like just a couple days ago. But we learned a lot about AI and its use in, its use in student-centered learning and also more about student-centered learning in general, as well as how boards work with districts and function highly. And just want to say thanks again to our team, to our board, to our staff, to our students and our families in this time of thanks. And I appreciate it all. Thanks. concludes my report. Any questions?
Members Zdowski?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to acknowledge all the work that you did Superintendent Vegas and Assistant Superintendent Vons and all of our staff here. You all put so much work into it. And I'm really proud of all you and all the work that we did as a board. And I know we were close on the second one. And I look forward to those discussions that you were talking about Superintendent Vegas as far as being strategic about how we move forward in the future with that.
Thank you.
Member Lafferty?
Well, I was, I hit my mic right when Member Zdowski did, so she really shared what the comments I was gonna say, just in terms of thank you to the community for your support to question one and your support for question two. Well, it did pass. It was very close. And the work that went into it by all of our staff and many opportunities that our staff at the school sites gave us to also do presentations and inform parents was really appreciated as well. And so, thank you for saying it so eloquently, Member Zdowski. And just say, also, student reps, great reports.
Member Samuel?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your student report. Those are always fun. I enjoy those. Superintendent Vegas, just a quick question and maybe for those listening and for the board. Can you give us an explanation of how this decision came down at Comden? You know, it just, it's frustrating sometimes when the perception was this was some board decision and obviously it wasn't. And, I mean, I understand the desire to have, you know, consistent uniformity across the district. So, how did this all happen, the way it happened? And how can we move forward with this, with the Comden community to try to, you know, resolve this where people feel comfortable with that building situation? I mean, it is unique. They're using a space that wasn't intended for how it's being used. And I kind of get that too, having been in the building with the large number of students they have there. You know, they're looking for those extra spaces to work with kids if they're struggling during the day. I'll wait for your answer. Thank you.
And this is when it's challenging to answer in a way that makes everybody happy because, well, to be honest, we've had complaints for years about Comden's doors being locked and parents feeling frustrated and feeling unwelcome. And I fielded those complaints and I brought them forward to other administrators and they've been shared with the principal and the doors remain blocked. And we did talk with, you know, there was some facilities concerns that were raised related to the doors. And from what I understand, Director Severance, that the, that our facilities manager assessed the situation and felt that it was, that it was equally safe to other areas. And I know that Director Sparks worked with our principal on that. And so, basically, after a period of time, we decided that we were gonna do what we've done at all the other schools and have them unlocked. And apparently, it's not well-supported. And that seems, ah, so, that's one of the things that's really weird about working in Duluth is because the culture here sometimes, it doesn't seem like it's, it, unfortunately, it seems to be directed towards making controversy and finding fault and really trying to blame other people. And it does seem like, like sometimes that there isn't a sense of unity, that we don't have a school district. We have a district of schools that make their own decisions without really thinking about how we work together. And that's unfortunate. And I think it's gonna prevent us from moving forward as a district sometimes and have the type of strategic plan that we need and be able to move forward together. So, I think that it's important for us to really take into account the needs of the parents. And it is important and this is something that we need to think about. And it was a surprise to people. But considering it's been an issue for several years that I've asked to have addressed, it's, it is a little bit surprising that there's a lot of finger pointing. And to be honest, that's what, part of what makes this job difficult as superintendent. And I think I better be good at that. Thank you.
I thank you for speaking to that issue. So, there's a little more for all of us and maybe for the greater community. And obviously, it's, it's something that, you know, the district has to work on to find a resolution to this moving forward, whether it's changes to that building or other ideas that come forward from those that know better. Thank you.
I agree. And, you know, I'll work with the team. We'll make sure we listen. We'll make sure that we, we take into account where everybody's at. And I think it's important for us to, to really, to really think about those deeper questions and how we probably move forward, but also how we listen to parents. Because the parents did bring up very valid concerns, but it's based partly on a lack of cohesive communication as a district that really needs to be something that we work on from here forward if we're gonna make progress together.
Thank you. Thanks for the conversation. Thanks for, you know, listening and catching us up on all kinds of things. And again, like Superintendent Vegas alluded to, we'd like to try to connect with board members through Patty with a potential closed meeting to hear from our teams on negotiations. So, be looking for that. Be looking for that. And the goal, I think, is to have it next week before they go in front of the teachers and the union as well. So, there's a couple of dates that Director, Executive Secretary for Captain Superintendent Vegas and myself will look at and give you that information. We're gonna move on in our agenda. It's C, it is the, the meeting dates coming up. And again, alluding to maybe a closed session next week. That's the week of November 27th through the 20th, December 1st, which says we have no meetings. But if we've been on this board long enough, we know that, you know, between property meetings or negotiations meetings or any number of things that come up on our plate, we might have a meeting next week. But I'm looking at our weeks of scheduled meetings and events. Again, we're back here the week of December 4th. Just a note to December 4th is a staff development day, so students will have that day off. And our district is providing staff development on at 4:30 with a monthly committee of the whole meeting. So that, that's in your agenda. Next on our agenda then is number nine. It's the report of the standing committees. Our first report is the committee of the whole, and this is just a summary of the meeting we had earlier this month with some awesome presentations and information.
Thank you. And I'll start with the committee of the whole, and I encourage the community, if they ever want to just get a, a brief summary of what occurs during those meetings and the topics is, just take a look at the board agendas and there's a, what we had is a cover sheet. And our cover sheet just has a quick summary of what occurs during those topics and what those topics cover. So a presentation was provided that is in alignment with our strategic plan for improving systems. It was in relationship to facilities services and facilities assessment. It was provided by Executive Director Severance, who is here. She and Brian Brownell, our facilities manager, provided some really good insight on how facilities are used to ensure that structured facilities are conducive to learning and are properly maintained. So some really great dialogue related to it. Another conversation that occurred in the presentation that was given was provided by Directors Sparks and Director Larva, who provided some information related to our other key area, which is advancing equity. They provide information related to our structural leadership academy. It is training and professional development that our principals and other leaders have engaged in over the last three years in relationship to leading with an equity mindset and becoming crafty and solid structural leaders. And so I want to thank them for their presentation that they provided. And the last area was provided by Jacob Laurent, who is our climate coordinator. He provided some insight to our MTSS system for socio-emotional behavioral, providing some insight on the work of our MTSS specialists, who, as you heard tonight, by one of our individuals providing some comment, our teachers providing comments. These are individuals that are in the building who are providing support for students. They also are charged with creating and fostering positive learning environment in the building with the staff, and these are our MTSS specialists. So Jake Laurent and Kelly Laurent are the individuals who work with our MTSS specialists to ensure that those individuals are well-supported and that they are leading, again, providing support for building to improve and foster a positive learning environment. And that was the end of our agenda, so those are the three presentations given. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. Any questions? Going back to our committee of the whole presentations, they were good. You good, Alan?
I think so.
Okay. Next is our report of Human Resource Business Service Committee that was on November 14th, and I think Chair Director Kirby is going to give it as Kelly member either was out of town.
Yes, thank you. I'll go through some of the highlights. Excuse me. With the HR monthly report, we had a lot of hiring going on. Twenty-nine new non-certified hires last month. And the department processed eighty-four teacher name change increases for this school year. Usually there are about twenty-five. This will have effect on budget, I'm told, that usually twenty-five to forty are anticipated, but not eighty-four. So this, some of this is built into budget projections, but some of those will have to be considered further. The district received an award from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for its commitment to advancing employment access and equity in employment for people with disabilities, and I think staff should be congratulated for that. We still have multiple openings, especially paraprofessionals, maintenance, and bus drivers. I think this is an ongoing issue, and as previously noted, contract negotiations are ongoing on. Enrollment, our projected ADM continues to run ahead of our projected ADM by about four hundred, a little bit more than that, so that's good news. Nutrition, October was born to school month, and the district programs and efforts were reviewed. A matching fifty-fifty grant for $10,000 has been applied for, and the challenges and benefits of these programs were discussed. The Denfeld After School Supper Meals Program was moved in, just started October 10th, and Monday through Thursday, free meals are available in the afternoon, and it's part of the full community school program. And last month, there were four hundred and seventy-six evening meals provided. And First Root and Vegetable Program at Myers Welcome started October 10th. Facilities, had quite a few things. There's a new computer maintenance management schedule, which would, or program which should improve work scheduling. Inspections at school buildings is ongoing with the fire marshal, and we're continuing efforts to fill the engineering positions. There was a walk-through with the architects and engineers at the DNT building, and the closing date was October 20th. So all DNT items are supposed to be out by tomorrow, I think. So it will be free. There was a discussion of a development of an RFP for, proposal for renovation of the Lincoln Park Middle School swimming pool. And this will take place hopefully this summer, when most of the swimming, swimming activities are at their low point. And then, Brian's not here, but a survey with a company called the Energy Services Corporation is scheduled, I believe? Is that, is that, is that survey scheduled, you know?
What light bulb?
About the light bulbs and the...
There will be a, our request for, our request for information that will be going out.
Okay, those are clear, yes.
To get, to get interested parties that want to pursue the bright, the one bright school is one of them.
This, they want to assess the lighting and efficiency of the lighting in all of our district buildings to show what savings can be garnered by using LED lighting. And this, if it works out, it should be no cost to the district because the savings that are garnered by switching to LED would pay for the cost of doing that. So this is, everything's going on forward. Technology, Bart continues to do an outstanding job with limited resources and personnel. Budget seems to be all right for next year, but given the narrow defeat of question two, strategies for future financing or technology have been discussed and are ongoing. In transportation, staffing is still a challenge. Our assistant manager is driving the morning route, and they're working through new software. There's still daily changes in routes, both for general and special ed, and so this is an ongoing issue. We looked over the resolutions for donations and grant awards. Fund balances were reviewed, including ESRA funding, and minutes tracking is expected. I think on the consent report, there's a quote for implementation of a content management system for employee files. This is for scanning documents, but it's part of an ongoing request. There were no expense, there were no, no cost, there were some no-cost contracts, these are mostly regarding student teaching. And grant applications were reviewed, and we thank the staff for these. Josh Leib, I've been Director at Denfeld, Jen Erickson at Fort MacArthur, and Cindy Miller, who's at Condon, had extensive grant applications, and we thank them for that. So that was the HR business report.
Thank you, Member Kirby. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to the last of our meeting reports from Chair, the policy committee, Member Lauterkamp. Thank you. The policy committee met on Wednesday, November 15th, and we had a, we had a hefty agenda. So we had three policies in first readings, and just a reminder, all of the items from the policy committee are on our consent agenda as well. And so a lot of the, the changes also are legislatively, and we did kind of talk a little bit about that at the policy meeting, how often there, there are a lot of legislative changes. There were a lot this year, and we're also really grateful with many of our policies in our first reading, that are new policies that our school board association and our superintendent association has vetted these as well, and just want to make sure the public knows that. But policies for first reading is 606.5 Library Materials, and had a great presentation from Cindy Miller, who's here in the audience, media specialist extraordinaire and wears many hats at Condon, and, and with the district, and Jen Larva, gave us some background on the committee that has been meeting and looking at this new policy, Policy 606.5. And it, the purpose of this policy is to provide direction and to delegate responsibility for selection and reconsideration of library materials. And like all of our policies, it goes over definitions, it goes over the responsibility for selection of library materials, different processes there, and how the request informally or formally would happen, and they are in the process of developing a form there that'll come back to us. And then it goes over the review committee and again has some of the legal references. So great presentation, and this is again our first reading, 606.5. The second policy, again, a new policy under student discipline, and again, want to thank Jen Larva and Jacob Laurent for the presentation and the background. 506, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that students are aware of and comply with the school district's expectations for student conduct. Such compliance will enhance the school district's ability to maintain discipline and ensure that there is no interference with the educational process. The school district will take appropriate disciplinary action when students fail to adhere to the code of student conduct established by this policy. And again, just, there's a lot, a lot of legal statutes that are attached to this and, and other cross-references. Once this policy is approved, it will be aligned with our student family handbook, and they will be coming back with some more of the procedures that will go with this policy. And so, again, group of staff really appreciate the time that was put into looking at this. So that is for the first reading policy, 506, student discipline. The third new policy is 507, corporal punishment. Again, the purpose of this policy is to describe limitations on use of corporal punishment and pro-restraint upon a student, students. And again, this is a new policy as well, and a lot of legislative additions with that. Let me see. Just step back to 506, student discipline. That also is deleting 5085 with the same name. Okay.
If I could just make a comment on 507 personally?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
I know that we've, you know, been working with, with that new policy, and you might have heard throughout the state that there's a lot of controversy related to school resource officers, partly related to the legislation that is based on 507 related to corporal punishment. And I think it's important when we consider our legislative platform to advocate for further clarification, just so that there's less ambiguity for staff and for school resource officers when, when working with students in intense situations. So I think that would be something that we want to consider with our legislative platform. So that might lead to other changes in 507, but it's, it's fairly ambiguous right now, but having our policy aligned with, with the statute would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, these three policies are new, and we're just trying to keep abreast of the legislative, the many legislative changes that were brought forward that impact school district policies. So again, first readings on all of those, and a lot of good information, again, was presented to the policy committee. Policy for second reading is Policy 206, Public Participation in School Board Meetings, Complaints About Persons at School Board Meetings and Data Privacy Considerations. And with this policy, we, my, my, change just a minute here. So with this policy, we had discussion in the first reading about the policy and looking at other districts' policies, because this has been, we have seen many school districts around the state make some changes around the public comment of the public participation. And again, the purpose of this policy is the school board recognizes the value of participation by the public in deliberations and decisions on school district matters. At the same time, the school board recognizes the importance of conducting orderly and efficient proceedings with opportunity for expression of all participants' respective views. And also, the purpose of this policy is to provide procedures to assure open and orderly public input, as well as to protect the due process and privacy rights of individuals under the law. So the proposal that change, that would change this policy is one, the change under five, six, seven, vulnerable seven, and it would be adding listening sessions and really taking the public comment out of our regular meeting and putting it before our meeting from 5:30 to 6:15. And then some of the discussion around that was, one, it would allow people to really know, have a consistent time when we're doing listening sessions or public comment. It also, other school districts have found that it's, it's really enhanced their public comment. People have felt more comfortable, it's been less intimidating, as well as it's been really more user-friendly, especially for, for parents, in terms of knowing consistently when the public comment would be, rather than how it falls within our, our other business meeting. So we're, we would like to make that recommendation, to have it from 5:15 to 6:15, call it a listening session, all the other procedures in terms of three minutes, following the stability, and all of those things would remain the same. The second change, though, would be to have people sign up ahead of time. And this has been pretty, again, a change that many school districts have made. And so what we proposed is that people would sign up the Monday before our regular monthly meeting. By noon, they would sign up at, through the superintendent's office. There would be a Google form, they could call, they would leave their name, address, phone number, and indicate the topic to be addressed. So that is the main change that we're recommending in this policy for second reading. And then, let's see, so any questions on that? Before I move on to policies for review, or any comments? So we're moving away from public comment right now into the next thing on your agenda? Well, I'm giving an opportunity for people to have any comments before I move to the next section on policies for review. So I, I, I'll share some...
So I'll share some observations and some insights into this as well. I could be wrong too, but I do remember a few months back where, in conversation with Teri Morrow from our MSBA, who has a real nice feel and understanding for policy, and I was in conversation about, you know, issues that are within this policy, and he pulled up our policy and said, "Well, you don't have the most recent MSBA policy." So I certainly don't want to take credit for the word "policy," but I vaguely remember that kind of catapulted us into, you know, knowing that we wanted to take another look at Policy 206, that there were some things that really, we did update this, when did we update this, Member Loughler Kemp?
In 2020, in October and November of 2020. So it's up for a normal review.
Yep. And so I just really appreciate the research especially, and I like to research and have done some research around this as well. I can remember when Member Oswald and I did a committee kind of work to see what other districts were doing, and we weren't looking at public comment then. But again, it's just been a practice, of course, to review and look at some ways to do it better. And there's just, there's been, you know, just some really great coffee and conversations among Minnesota School Board Associations. And when we go to conferences, we hear from other districts and what they're doing. And so I really appreciate the policy committees looking at, you know, other districts and kind of taking, you know, some of the things that they do well. But I know for one thing, you know, many other districts have even gotten tighter with the process of listening sessions or public comment. And some really have enjoyed their listening session for the reasons that Member Loughler Kemp said, it's less intimidating, it's a scheduled time, they can pretty much know that if they come at 5:15 or 5:20, that there's, that we will not be delayed, either with a closed session that we have beforehand, or, you know, something, some other long thing that happens, so that they can get back. As a board chair, I really, I really would be very interested in the way that listening session would happen, because as a, I think it comes from my teaching background, I think it comes from my work as a board chair, I think it comes from my work in performance. And when, you know, one choir is done, you know, the parents get up and leave because they don't want to listen to the rest of the choir. And I don't want our community to come to a board meeting and have to feel uncomfortable about leaving in the middle of a board meeting. I don't, I don't like to set them up to feel that way. And that's, and I want them to be able to come and share comments with us as a board. It's called listening, so they want us to listen. We did that nicely tonight, and, you know, it's an opportunity, but I really like the idea of doing it beforehand, so that, one, once we get to the business meeting, we are set, our mind is set. There are times when we hear really hard things during a public comment. And if it's in the middle of our board, and I think I experienced that a little bit tonight with all of us, that it's hard to go back into the business. It makes it look like, you know, we're just, well, we're on to the next thing, and we just heard some stuff, but, you know, we got a meeting. I think having it beforehand, it will take some getting used to. There'll probably be some concerns, but I think we can work through that, because I really ultimately think that it will be better for our community. I do, as a public speaking person. That's my observation. I think somebody else maybe had their mic on. So it'll be Member Sandholm and then Member Oswald.
Don't forget about me, Member Oswald.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Chair and Folks. Just doing math real quick, and the number of speakers we had tonight was about 12, and we can squeeze that into 45 minutes, you know, so, you know, it may be enough time. I would hope that the board does reflect on this as this is implemented and, you know, recognize that maybe there will be a need to, you know, be somewhat flexible with the time for the allotted speakers. And I mean, obviously, if that's being controlled by the sign up, you know, it looks like you're going to have time, if it's three minutes each, you gotta add a minute just for the changeover for each speaker, it's going to be difficult to take more than 11 or 12 individuals for public comment in a 45-minute period. And then there are other ways, like the issue that was dominated, public comment tonight, there are other ways, and many of those individuals exercised those ways with emails to all of us, to express concerns on issues that come up maybe at the last minute of a day or at any other time, or at any other time of the month, you know, prior to the public comment. So the public comment, listening session is really not the community's only opportunity to share concerns that they might have with the board. And with our next public comment or listening sessions in the new year, you know, you'll maybe hear some discussion from the community. So we'll see where it takes us. But I do think this can work, I hope it works. And then I think, yes, there is value of maybe separating it from the board meeting because it gives the board a break. It'd be very, it's going to be very important that, you know, the board have, the board has full attendance for the listening sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sandholm. And I appreciated the discussion we had both in our first reading of this and then in our second reading. I would just add, again, in that section of the listening sessions, it does have, with advance notice, that the school board chair reserves the right to adjust the time of a listening session. And so we made sure that was there if we should have a topic where we might want a little bit more time because of signups. So that's included in the change.
I see. Member Oswald, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Superintendent Mayes. My number one concern here is that 5:15 is too early for working parents. The parents that get done with work at 5 o'clock, they're still commuting home, that, you know, it, I would say that that time may need to be revisited and readjusted to allow for participation. I don't believe parents are as available as they, as we might think they are at 5:15 to be able to attend. And so, you know, knowing that the chair has the right to adjust the time period, I don't know if that includes the start of when public comment would happen. Perhaps that's something that can be revisited in the future, should this not be conducive to a lot of participation. And I guess my question about that more is, is if no one signs up the day before, is it canceled and nobody, and we don't show up for the public comment? Or can parents show up at 5:45 or whenever they can get there to still participate in public comment, even if there's no speakers before them? That, you know, those kinds of ambiguity questions are what I kind of have right now, and I don't picture how this process is working at this point. If anybody has any explanation to that, I'd appreciate it, but otherwise, there are going to be concerns that I think you'll have to revisit.
Thank you for your thoughtfulness there, Member Oswald. It's 5:30 to 6:15 is the timeframe, and that, you know, we will see how that time works. And that's then the value of people signing up ahead of time, is then we can kind of work with both the numbers of people, or we can, in some school districts, they will contact the people who signed up just to confirm what time, doing that timeframe, that they can come, and make sure that works. And again, I think with all of our policies, we can give it a shot, and we can make changes along the way. And it has worked well in other districts. And we did a lot of research on looking at how other districts are doing it. And so we're actually being pretty generous with 45 minutes. Some districts, it's 15, some it's not at all, some it's a half an hour. Some have people sign up the week ahead of time, or the Friday before. So we looked at, you know, a lot of different processes for districts. But certainly, as we try it out, we can look at how it's working and make changes in reviews, like we do with any policy.
Yep, the reader.
Thank you. I want to comment on the, first, the public comment policy, then I just want to quickly go back to the first reading on the selection of library materials. So first thing is I, when we first talked about this policy, Member Loughler Kemp reached out, we had a conversation about it that I appreciated. And at first, I had a little bit of hesitancy and concern, and the more that I thought about, the more research I did, the more I warmed up to this policy, especially having that dedicated time for the board to really sit with the public comments and have the full attention without worrying about, when is my report coming up? Do I have all the information I need to do my report for the HR Business Services, or for the policy, or for many of the other discussions that we have? That this is a time that we can use exclusively and give our full attention to our public and hear what they have to say and sit with those comments. The second thing that I think warmed me up about this policy is I have a great deal of, as we all do, value and respect for the staff that attend our, that attend our school board meetings. And I know how diligently hard they work during the week. And those public comment time that our public comes and comments are really for the school board, for the superintendent, and for the assistant superintendent, really not meant for our, the rest of our staff. So I feel like this is a great way that we can show our staff that we value their time, that we can have our listening session before the, before the business part of the meeting, the staff can come, do their part, participate in their portion of the business part of our board meeting, and know that they're not going to be home at 9:00 or 9:30 at night and then need to show up for our kids at 7:30 the next morning. So I think one of the big things that do this policy to me is a way for us to show our staff that we really do value their time and understand that this can be a lot for them to sit through these public comments. So those are the two things that I really value. I know the talented Chief Information Officer and the rest of the district will work really hard and diligently to make sure that we inform our public and our families of this change, and will take our time and lean in to making sure that we get as much information out to the public as we can, and reiterate that this is a change that we are looking to make. So I have a lot of confidence in our staff and our district that we can make sure to get this information out to the public. And then, as usual, our public has a responsibility to make sure that they're paying attention and that they see that there's this change that we're making. And they are free to sign up if we pass this policy and come in to tell us how they would like to change the public comment. So I think that that's really important. So those are my feelings there. And then I just want to quickly go back and touch on the first reading of the library policy, and specifically look at page three, section five, when it talks about selection of library materials, number three, and I just want to read this. What I love about this part is it also talks, this section talks about what we want to include in our library section, and it talks about what we are not going to exclude in the selection of our library materials. And we are not going to exclude library materials that our staff and our children have access to because of race, nationality, religion, sex, gender, gender identity, and orientation, or political views of the writer. So I think that that's really important, that we talk about in this policy, not what we want, but what we are not going to exclude. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciated you highlighting that section of the library policy, as well as, again, the professionals are the ones that would be doing that selection with the review process. Also, I just really appreciated your comment about the public participation as a parent. That was one of the reasons why I just wanted to get some perspective as a parent of younger kids on the timeframe. And I know that you talk with a lot of parents out there, so as I do too, but that was helpful. Member Zdowski, and then Member Kirby.
Yeah, I appreciated Member Eater pointing out section, or number three of section, no, I have the old one in front of me, is it section seven?
It could be.
Section five.
I have the old one in front of me, so I appreciate you pointing that out. And then two, the thoughtfulness that was put into this policy about, you know, if there was a reconsideration, there's really good procedures in this policy, outlining how that conversation would happen. And another thing I pointed out in the policy committee is just, I'm trying to find the part here. The part that talks about that the school board recognizes the expertise of the school district's professional staff and the vital need of such staff to be responsible for the selection. We have staff members who've been trained in this, I'm going to get the name right, but Library Media Specialist, is that right? Yeah, they're trained professionals in this, they do a lot of the research, so I'm glad that was in there too. I guess that's all I have, I just prompted to remember that from Member Eater's comment, so, thanks.
And then Member Kirby.
Thanks. I think that, you know, to talk about the listening session, Policy 206, I think it's very important that we give the public a chance to address the board as a whole and individually. And I like Member Eater's comment about staff time, I was going to mention that as well. And Member Sandholm's comment, there's other ways that they can reach us. He failed to mention actually writing letters.
We got one.
Fail mails, yes. And I can receive them even in cursive. I think all of us can read cursive, although it may not be true of some people, and we can misremember what can. Anyway, I think that it's important that we, that the public realizes there are other ways to reach us, and even though there's a listening session and they should participate in that, sometimes a letter, more than an email even, will hit home and bring the party across. So I support the policy change.
Superintendent Mayes.
Yes, thank you. And I was thinking about, should the board choose to adopt this policy? It would be important for us to foreshadow in our newsletters and other communications to staff and families, just because I want to make sure that there's a, there's a full transparency to the change in practice, so that people are ready for it right away and don't feel like it happens too quickly. So I would look to our communications officer to assist with that. Thank you.
And going on that background, I would propose that this policy, if it's adopted tonight, would begin in January. If it passes tonight, we could very well start it in December. But I think that having another month and then another December board meeting to see the public that does come for our comment and remind them that, you know, we have decided that it's a better policy that we feel will enhance our listening and our community, the ability to come in and speak to us. So I don't know if that needs any, any...
We have truth in taxation in December anyway, so I think it would be difficult to kind of slide that in there now or short notice.
Okay.
Correct. So Dan, restart. Dave is a good idea for that.
Great, great discussion. Anybody else have any other questions before I finish up my report? Bringing y'all back here. Thank you, though, that was really good discussion. So, and the last section then is policies for review. And again, these only need one reading because they're all legislative changes, and so...
Could you turn your mic down?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
Just for the...
Do you want me to do my joke again, because I can't remember? Okay, so policies for review, and these only need one reading because they're legislative changes. And so the first one is 534, School Meals Policy. And again, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that students receive healthy and nutritious meals through the school district's nutrition program, and that school district employees, families, and students have a shared understanding of expectations regarding meal change charges. The policy of the school district is to provide meals to students in a respectful manner and... and to maintain the dignity of students by prohibiting lunch shaming or otherwise ostracizing the student. The policy seeks to allow students to receive the nutrition they need to stay focused during this school day and minimize identification of students with insufficient funds to pay for à la carte items or second meals, as well as to maintain the financial integrity of the school lunch program. And again, there were some, some changes, we had just looked at this policy back in December of last year as well, and we had already made some changes there, but these were legislative changes. So, 534. The next one is Policy 708, transportation of non-public school students, and the purpose of this policy is to address transportation rights of non-public school students and to provide equality of treatment in transporting such students pursuant to the law. And again, a number of legislative changes were made in this policy. And then the last one is Policy 428, probationary teacher evaluation. This is renumbered from 4080 with the same name, and for some reason I can't figure out how to put my computer, so we added a purpose of this, and I'm sure it's something simple, but. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that all probationary certified staff members are elevated, evaluated in accordance with Minnesota State statutes. Inherent in an evaluation plan is a means for improving employee performance and ensuring continued instructional improvement. And one of the changes there was the dates of when evaluations would happen, December 1st, February 1st, and May 1st. And, again, legislative changes, all of these just need one reading, and the whole report will be on the consent agenda. And our next policy meeting will be December 5th. Thank you.
And again, a 67-page policy recap, and is, you guys got, you got a lot of work done in that, and I watched it and just was really, really appreciative, you've said it a number of times, you know, Director Larva, just, you know, just you were, you were at the table for many of these policies, and they were so well done, so thorough, so the student discipline is 20 pages long, and I just thought of you guys sitting down with that family handbook and eyeing that up, and so, you know, just, and again, I'm so appreciative of the, of the policies we're creating, the media specialists, the library selection, all of those are, are important topics that we have to have a policy for, sometimes we, we make decisions in, you know, the 18 buildings, everybody gets to make their own decisions, so policy is really key, and I was privileged this morning to be on the 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock Minnesota School Board Association coffee and conversation, of which any of you are welcome to join, and I'll continue to, you know, but today when the whole conversation was on policy, other board members across the state are interested in how does your board, you know, move policy, and, you know, I had to share a few, a few gems, so I appreciate that, so thank you, good report, lots of work. So that moves us, okay.
I have a question about the school meals policy. It's about the unpaid meal charges. I know you talked earlier, there's quite a few in this district, and how do we go forward in trying to collect those, or what's the statute at right now?
The Food Nutrition Department has submitted a food debt collection twice, and we have reduced our, it was originally 102,000, it's gone down to 84,000, and so they're, they're working on it. Because of the free meals, we've had some, you know, stoppage on paying some of that outstanding debt, so that's something I'll have to work with administration on and our auditors, to see, you know, we have to make adjustments with it. But it stays on our books, and it is a common issue right now with many districts, I've just received information on that as well.
Can I ask a further question now that you, is so, so we've still left that existing debt, we've got a universal free meal program, but there is still the à la carte and the ability for our students to purchase second meals or à la carte, and they also are allowed ways to give an account, they don't have to pay for it right there, but they, their parents can put money in an account, or their family, or their, whoever will do that, grandparents or community people that are working to help us, and so, do you, do you think that we will see unpaid lunch accrue in those accounts that we allow for à la carte?
Well, in that policy that, that was just presented, it says they have to be prepaid. So, that's the change now, so going forward, and honestly, most of our debt is from the à la carte line, yeah, so going forward, it has to be prepaid, because it's recognized across the state that it's a problem, so.
Interesting, well, thank you, I mean, that's, that's kind of an interesting point, because of course, lots of areas in our policy are, are to avoid that kind of shaming or that kind of uncomfortableness, and so, yeah, prepaid, and, I mean, I, yeah, I agree with the prepaid, because they're, they're already getting a free universal meal, so, yeah, interesting, thank you.
Sure, I just wanted to add while we're talking about this policy, in section 2B, it's just a reminder as well to families that they may apply for free and reduced price meal benefits anytime during the school year, applications are distributed to all families in the district prior to the students' first day classes, but applications are available on the school website, or available by mail, or UPS, and so, we encourage families to apply if, anytime through the year, so.
Moving on to number 10, it's general board committee updates. So these are opportunities for those of us that serve on a variety of boards to, you know, give some updates, especially if there's some things coming that we need to either attend, or look for, or understand. So, Members Zdowski.
Yeah, thank you. We had a great EF meeting last Thursday, I think it was, all of the days of bonding together, the busy last month that we've had. It was a unique EF because it was bonded with staff who came, and we discussed the world's best workforce, and we split into different small groups, and we talked about kindergarten readiness, read well by age three, high achievement for all students, graduation, and then college and career readiness. So, I was able to stay for most of it, but it was a really great evening, I thought. A lot of staff were there, a lot of the folks from our community that attend our Educational Equity Alliance committee meetings were there, and I thought there was a lot of good suggestions, a lot of positive feedback, and, yeah, I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Barnes has anything to add, but I thought it was nice.
No, it was well attended, and thank you for sharing that, and again, I want to publicly thank the team that led the effort for, for bringing the community together, to really have some really focused conversations on how we can improve outcomes for students, and so it was a well-attended event at night, and it was really reflective, in my mind, of the diversity that exists in the community, and hearing the perspectives of all of our stakeholders who have concerns about their kids and our family members, and so I want to, again, appreciate, show appreciation, thanks to our team. Thank you, and thank you for joining.
Member Sandholm, and then Member Loffler-Kemp.
I don't have a lot to report of, and just the next, there was no 708 meeting, and so, the next one is in January, sharing that. And I did inquire or ask one of our ADs about if High School League is looking at requiring neck guards for our hockey players, and apparently they haven't taken that up, so the Minnesota State High School League hasn't, there may be our discussions going on, but there's nothing, I guess, in the pipeline to, you know, make that a mandatory equipment or requirement for players, but I would not be surprised if that, that comes up in the future. And I think we, most of us are aware, not all of us are aware, of the unfortunate passing of Adam Johnson, who I got a chance to meet and know when I was coaching tennis, and so, very sad, and I feel condolences to his family and the community, and give him for his loss.
Thank you, Member Sandholm, for that note on that remembrance, and also for your service on my committee, Ken, it's been much appreciated over the years.
Member Loffler-Kemp.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Member Sandholm. I think, you know, when we think of that particular board, and the many activities in our district that we have that fall under the State High School League, from debate and speech to, you know, the sport, the many sports that our district provides, and is a part of, it's a, it's really, it's a very important committee, but it's also, it is all about creating more and more opportunities for kids, and I, I know just my time on the board, we've added lacrosse, and we've added mountain biking and different activities so all kids can find a place in our district, and so, thank you for that service. I just wanted to highlight two things we really heard tonight from one of the committees I serve on, the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund, on the school board liaison on that, and it's a really fun board to be a part of, and you heard a couple teachers speak, but every year we give 19 to 25 grants and to schools, and the Board of Trustees, well, Assistant Barnes kind of highlighted, who's on it, the other highlight is who serves on that board, is a lot of retired teachers, and we just brought on three new retired teachers, that between the three of them, I think, have 90 years of service in our district, and, and so they'll be a part of helping decide for the next few years who grants go to, so that, that's really an exciting part, is to bring in retired teachers in a new way, and I, I've gotten to ask a few teachers to, to be on the board, and they're always like really honored to be pulled in, in a different way, so, so I just wanted to mention that, as well as Carolyn Sorensen was my daughter's teacher. I was excited about that. And then with that committee, we're, we're now in the, we kind of have a calendar of activities where we go out as Board of Trustees and talk to other different staff meetings, and just really highlight about this opportunity, so that's coming up in December and January. And then the other one I, I serve on that I just wanted to really highlight was on the Head Start Governing Board, and we had a presentation, which was an, always an excellent annual presentation we get from Head Start, but I, I just wanted to just make sure people, you know, heard that loud and clear, what a unique Head Start program we have in Duluth, because it's a part of our school district, we're the only Head Start program that is embedded into our schools, and that's a really wonderful partnership, and such a great way to get these families involved and staying with our school district, and so I was just impressed with Sherri Williams' updates on the, the many community partners that is involved with Head Start, you know, as a district, we have many community partners, but she highlighted that, she highlighted a little bit of their own governing board. We have so many parents involved in different ways, and that's another unique way parents are involved is as, as governing board members, and they just elected their new board for this year, and the chair of it is a dad in our district, so that's always great to find ways to keep dads involved as well. So, I just wanted to kind of touch on those two committees that I have the opportunity to serve on.
Thank you, and that just brings us to number 11, it's our consent agenda, and that's where we put a lot of our details and our work that we've done in committees on a consent, because they're, they've already been discussed at committee meetings, they've already been looked at by us, and so, we have things on there like minutes from our past meetings, the, the action items and the finance reports, the approval of the policy readings, even, you know, our first reading, we have quite a few first readings and a few second readings, so we'll be seeing some of those first readings, again, library materials, student discipline, and corporate punishment ones. And then the policies for review, because they were mandated by the state, and so we don't need two readings on that. And then approval, as we vote on this, the approval of the reports we just give. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent.
Cheryl, I just have a quick question about something on the consent agenda, because maybe I missed it somewhere else. The First Amendment to Development Agreement, is that something in the business agreement? Or is that something new?
I can address that, because I think it is HR Business, and it was a, it's in our packet, and it is, I, well, I don't, probably you guys should explain, I know it's about the city, about the road, Portia Johnson Drive.
Yeah, and I have the map up, I was just trying to get an understanding of what this was about, so maybe for clarification to the board and the community, you can, you can share that with us, thank you.
So, the, it's related to the, the portion of this part of the road that goes over to Blackman Avenue. We currently own that property, and this agreement would allow for the city at, at some point to take over that road, but then they would also be responsible for maintaining it, and right now, we are responsible for keeping it clean. So the amendments are, to, related to that.
So, Portia Johnson Drive, basically from Blackman, the math's really hard to read, from Blackman all the way across in front of district services, or, or is it going to go around into the other property?
The, it, what's currently there is just that part that we're responsible for, which is in front of this, this building, all to Blackman Avenue.
And so this is an agreement to hand that responsibility off to the city?
If they, if they choose that when there's a development, they are going to be doing some different studies, and they may want to take over that as a result of access to this property and for better traffic control, depending on what the developer is, so it's just allowing that that could happen in the future. But at this point, we are still.
So through this winter, we'll be responsible for plowing Portia Johnson Drive, in essence, from?
Yes.
From central entrance to Blackman?
Yes. Not from central entrance.
Okay.
It's just that component when you turn onto Portia Johnson Drive.
I think one of the issues was that when development takes place, that room doesn't meet the criteria for a proper city street.
Correct.
And so, when that has to happen, then they will take it over, but they will be responsible for the maintenance of all that.
Thank you, Paul.
And I inquired, I, I inquired to make, I, I, I think that it's kind of official, but that I asked if we would keep it Portia Johnson Drive, and they, they said that that wouldn't be expected, or?
Yes, that's, that's the name of the road.
Okay, okay, good deal. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve consent in a second, and we will do a roll call vote.
Member Sandholm.
Yes.
Member Jerickida.
Yes.
Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Loffler-Kemp.
Yes.
Member Lofer.
Yes.
Member Oswald.
Yes.
So that is our consent agenda, thank you. That brings us to our special resolutions, and so I'm looking to Member Zdowski for our first resolution for our approval.
Sure, I'm going to move Resolution B-11-23-3994, the acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolutions, a resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donors involved, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance
and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's term is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set for herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations, and just to highlight a couple, I see some donations to Head Start, to the Hunter of the Month Lunch for PBIS, and then a lot of yummy snack packs and other things too, so I'm in that one's.
Is, is there a second? Member Sandholm, seconds, roll call vote.
All right. Member Dirk Eater.
Yes.
Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Lachlan.
Yes.
Member Lowpaw.
Yes.
Member Oswald.
Yes.
I vote yes, and Member Sandholm.
Yes.
Thank you, that, that motion passes, and then that brings us to our second resolution, and Member Lachlan.
Okay, Resolution B-11233995, I move acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 46503 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in fault, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set for herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And there were two, Minnesota FFA, and I'm not sure if that's Future Farmers of America, that's what I think of, is it? Okay. I was just hanging out at a Farmers Union Conference this weekend, and so I was like, oh, but anyways, I digress. $2,000 awarded to East High School Mental Health Grant to purchase hammocks students can check out to use in the school floors.
Cool.
And then Duluth Heritage Sports Center Foundation, $150 to provide one hour of ice time for third-grade field trip at Lester Park School. So I move Resolution B-11233995.
Second?
Second.
Member Eater, seconds, roll call vote.
Member Lachlan.
Yes.
Member Lowpaw.
Yes.
Member Oswald.
Yes.
I vote yes, Member Sandholm.
Yes.
Member Dirk Eater.
Yes, and I wanna know how they got an hour of ice for $150, 'cause that's crazy.
It's in the morning during the day.
It's like 2:35.
And Member Kirby.
Yes.
That resolution passes, so that moves us to number 13 on our agenda, special resolutions and action items, and Member Eater will read in this resolution motion.
I move Resolution HR-11-23-3996, the Duluth Principal Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and the Duluth Principals Association, a summary of which is in the hands of all the school board members, be approved and adopted for the periods of August 1st, 2023, to July 31st, 2025 inclusive, and that the chairperson and the clerk of the school board, school board, be hereby authorized to execute, execute said agreement on behalf of the school district.
And is there a second?
Second.
Member Lachlan, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Lachlan.
Yes.
Member Lowpaw.
Yes.
Member Oswald.
Yes.
And yes, Member Sandholm.
Yes.
And Member Dirk Eater.
Yes.
That resolution passes as well, that brings us to 14 on our agenda, it's questions and other. Seems to me somebody had something for that, that said something, no? Going once, going twice. Okay, that means that we need a motion to adjourn. So who? Member Kirby?
Second.
Second, by Member Sandholm, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our, our meeting is adjourned.